Commissioner Milovich Walters?
President.
Commissioner Wade? Commissioner Lee?
All forms of the federal religion, of our religion to the United States and America, these republics where we stand, are nation, under God, neither is there religion that exists.
A draft of the minutes from our previous meeting on March 27th. Questions, comments, or suggestions? If not, I would seek a motion to approve at this time.
So moved.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a few proclamations this evening. First, I want to proclaim April 30th through May 2nd, 2023. It's Minutes for Clerks Week. I also want to proclaim May 2023 Motorcycle Awareness Month, and proclaim May 2023 as Older Americans Month. Consent on agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward in the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. Discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on a warrant list dated April 10, 2023, in the amount of $110,272.70. Item B, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated April 10, 2023, for manual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of $367,854.50. And do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved. Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Any items of old business we thought before the council at this time? We have no board, commission, and community recommendations, so we'll just move to information and updates, Public Works and Streets, Recreation Report, Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a couple items on the agenda. The first one is regarding our irrigation system purchase. An irrigation system for the Village Green has been a priority for the village since the field was redone in 2016. At its November 9th, 2015 meeting, the village council approved a proposal to design and install a proper field drainage system, regrade the sod and sod the entire grass field of the Village Green, and the cost of that project was $38,783.50. The irrigation system for the Village Green will be funded through a Department of Commerce and Community Affairs grant from the Build Illinois Bond Fund to the Village of Pales Park for costs associated with capital improvements for constructing a playground and installing a sprinkler system. This grant total was $50,000 for the two projects, with approximately $10,000 being for the irrigation system and $40,000 for the playground construction. Additional funding from the playground will come from the general fund balance. Build staff sought a proposal from Krepsky Sprinkler Systems to furnish all materials and labor necessary for the installation of an automatic sprinkler system to the Village Green field area. The base price for the system includes 48 pop-up gear-driven rotors in six zones using a self-draining system. The system will have the capacity to inject fertilizer and/or mosquito repellent onto the field, saving time and money. The cost for this system is $9,740. For an additional price of $300, the option to include a RID-O-Rust injection system with a Wi-Fi timer. As the irrigation system will be tied to well system at the recreation building, the RID-O-Rust system will keep the spray from staining the adjacent concrete and wood structures. Staff recommends approving this option for a total price of $10,040. Any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of an automatic irrigation system for the Village Green Field to Krepsky Sprinkler System Incorporated at a cost of $10,040.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries.
So the next item is regarding our playground. I'm just going to read the first paragraph of this and then introduce somebody to everyone. The Village Green has been working with New Toys Leisure Products to scope out replacement playground equipment at the Village Green Park. The existing play structures at the Village Green are approximately 20 to 25 years old, show signs of wear from many years of use, and the play booster system is made by Landscape Structures. This product system is used in a number of parks and surrounding communities, including Pales Heights, Orland Park, and Homer Glen. When we purchase this playground equipment, it will include the installation and the removal of the existing equipment, installation of playbound play surface and wood chips at the Village Green Park. It will be partially funded through a Department of Commerce and Community Affairs grant from the Build Illinois Bond Fund to the Village of Pales Park for costs associated with capital improvements for constructing a playground and installing a sprinkler system. This grant total is $50,000 for the two projects, $10,000 for the irrigation, and $40,000 toward the playground construction. So before we go into the cost of the playground equipment, I want to introduce Rick Beederman from New Toys to show us what our new playground will look like and tell us a little about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. As Nicole had indicated, my name is Rick Beederman. I am with New Toys Leisure Products out of Westchester, Illinois. We are a representative for Landscape Structures Incorporated out of Delano, Minnesota. Just to give you a little history on Landscape Structures, they've been in the business for a little over 50 years now. It is a employee-owned company with about 400 full-time employees. Barb and Steve King, who originated the business back in 1971. Barb is passed, Steve is retired. They gave the entire business to the employees upon their leaving. So it's a terrific company. I have been with them for 41 years. As I have told the committee before, I started when I was five. But the committee has done just a great job. This is very refreshing to me because this is what we did, what I did when I got in this business a long time ago, was go to meetings, present, and show people what we do and why we do it. And that all kind of went away with iPads and phones and everything else, and everybody wants to talk to a screen today. So meeting with your committee on three or four occasions was just very refreshing. Great questions, great ideas. They went out and played, they saw playgrounds, and they picked and chose the things they wanted, and that's how we came up with the design that we did. So just to kind of walk you through it, your space is going to remain the same, although we're going to kick it out back in one corner here, where we're going to expand the concrete border slightly in order to accommodate what is right here in the corner, the oodle swing. Now, the thought behind the design of every playground is we're required to create an ADA-compliant playground. That doesn't mean it has to have ramps, but we do have to have so many above-ground, so many ground-level types of activities for any disabled child or an adult to come and play on the playground. Lot more went into this than many of them, with pathways and pieces as we'll walk through here. So to look at it, what you try to do is you try to create so many ways up and so many ways down. Little one gets up to the six- or eight-foot-high deck and mom panics, she's got to be able to get up there to find him. So what we do is try to create as many ways up as many ways down. The basis of designs today is usually eight-inch increments. So you start at ground level, eight inches, 16, 24, 32, 40, 48. Gets you up to anywhere from a six to an eight-foot deck. But there's also more complicated climbers, stones, nets, all different kinds of things that can go into the design. So what you have in your design are numerous slides. You have what's called a slide-winder slide here. Slides down from a six-foot-high deck. How do you get up there? Well, you can get up there by way of the net, you can get up there by way of what we call a canyon climber. This is a, what we call a GFRC rock climber. Last fiberglass reinforced concrete. It looks as rocky-real as you can imagine. The wishbone balance beam here, too, is the same product. Climbers, you can also get underneath here. You can peek out from under there. So as you can climb across from six foot to six foot here, you can get over here and it takes us up over to another slide, and on the backside, there's a little climber that gets you up from ground level, too. You can see, they wanted to put an environmental approach into it. So we've got colors that are environmental-friendly, we've got rooftops, treehouse-looking type of playground, which I think is really cool. What you have on here is a track ride, which is a little zip line from one side to the other. We're very emphatic about having landing points on each end. We want the kids to be able to step up to 16 inches and be able to grab the handle. We don't want them jumping and lunging and then getting to the other end and dropping down. We want them to land their feet on a platform. So that's what you see here. So everything in here is interconnecting. This is primarily for five-to-12-year-old children, or older, or adults. There's also a six-to-23-month, or a two-to-five playground down in here for the smaller ones, too. But for those either that have children or grandchildren, like I do, they want to get to the highest point as quickly as possible. And they do, they find their way up there. And the way it's designed, by stepping up increments internally, they can get up to the six-and-eight-foot deck very easily. But for those that don't, there's more ground-level type things for them, too. So wandering, when you approach the playground, the way we designed it is you come in through... So, okay. So you enter, and we created what's called a port-in-place pathway. Port-in-place material, if you're not familiar with it, is a rubberized material that looks like this. You have a base bottom, and then you've got a colored top. Your color options are numerous. It can be green and black, green and tan, tan and red, whatever you choose. The base at the bottom is all black. It goes over a five-inch compacted stone base. So with your design, what you will have is a combination of wood chips and rubber surfacing. The wood chips will come up to the sides of the rubber pathway and meet where the rubber will be built at that point. So as they approach the pathway, they can get to numerous different things. These are rhapsody pieces, which are musical, very much fun. The kids really, really, really enjoy those kinds of pieces, well as Grandma and Grandpa. They're out there playing. So as you get over here, the path will take you right to an accessible molded swing. There's also a tot swing and two-belt swings. And then the odyssey swing here is a swing that will accommodate large numbers of kids at one time, or one, if you choose to. So that kind of tells you a little bit about what went into the design. Questions? No questions?
When's it going to be done?
Right now, it's scheduled for, I believe, the end of September to start, late or early fall. And that's a sign of the times. We're normally a six-week delivery, but we're about three, four months right now. So, right now, I think our plan was to try to get it going late September. With the rubber surface, we have to do that before the temperatures hit 50 degrees. That has to be done. So we usually can do that up till about middle of November, first of November. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Rick.
Thank you very much for being here at the meeting.
We went through many changes with the playground and some changes in the last four weeks where we were able to reconfigure and decide we could bump it out a bit so we can accommodate the oodle swing, which was something we thought a lot of kids would really enjoy because it's like a tire swing. So that pushed our delivery date out a little bit by making some changes. Hopefully, if things get delivered sooner, we'll get started sooner. That's always the goal. But in the meantime, I'll talk about price. The cost of this playground equipment is proposed as $128,637. Demolition of the existing equipment, installation of the new equipment, installation of the new playbound surface and mulch will be $98,250, for a total cost of $226,887. While the grant has yet to disperse through DCEO, all necessary documents have been submitted, and the village funding request is currently in the state review process. Approximately $187,887 will be required and has been included in the upcoming 24 budget. The draft budget contains both the receipt of the grant revenue as well as this expenditure, and the budget anticipates an increase in the general fund surplus at the end of the year. Any other questions? I move to forego the bid formal bid process and approve the proposal from New Toys Leisure Products of Westchester, Illinois, for replacing the playground structures and surface at the Village Green Park at a cost of $226,887.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters? Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Beederman.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Next item on the agenda is regarding the engineering construction for the water main extension from the former Holy Family Villa property to Cog Hill west of Bell Road. The village has previously entered into agreements with Baxter and Woodman for the IEP-A required project plan, engineering plans for the water main extension to the Cog Hill, and for assistance in completing the IEP-A loan documentation. The village requested a proposal for Baxter for construction engineering. This agreement would cover construction layout and daily inspection during construction. Construction is estimated to take three months. This cost would be covered under the IEP-A loan. In order to score higher point value during the IEP-A review, a signed construction agreement is needed, and when the loan application grading begins, this is not to exceed contract cost of $111,650, which is 5.5% of the estimated construction cost of $2,019,000. Any questions?
Commissioner, this matter was on the original agenda on Friday. I listed $11,650 because that was not discovered till this afternoon. We'll ask that it be continued till the next meeting. So if you seek a motion to continue to the April 24th, 2023 meeting, we appreciate it.
All right, well, let's make a motion to continue us to the April 24th meeting.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes, and motion carries. That item will be on the April 24th agenda.
And the next item on the agenda is regarding approval for a purchase of a fully-equipped Ford F-550. In May of 2022, Public Works requested that the village council approve the purchase of a new Ford F-550 truck and equipment package. The truck cost at the time was $42,926, and the equipment package is $71,799, for a total cost of $114,725. The order for the truck was placed, unfortunately, the village found out that due to demand, the order would not be fulfilled, and we announced that at the June 2022 council meeting. March of 2023, the council approved buying a riding mower using some of the money that was budgeted for the truck spending, which was $16,575. This week, Public Works was made aware of availability of a truck that would be fully-equipped with a steel dump body, snowplow, salt spreader, hydraulic power system, and emergency lights at Cunis Auto Group in Antioch. This truck would be available in the next few months. When ordering such a truck, the wait time is typically one and a half years for delivery. The cost of the truck with the equipment is $139,874.26. $160,000 was budgeted in the half-percent sales tax fund for the truck in the 23-24 budget. With the cost as proposed, Public Works would stay within the budget, and Public Works is seeking approval to purchase this truck. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion to forego the formal bidding process and approve the proposal from Cunis Auto Group in Antioch, Illinois, in the amount of $139,847.26, to purchase a fully-equipped 2023 Ford F-550 truck.
On the agenda is 847. I think it's, as you read in the report, it's 874.
Oh, wait. Yeah, wait. It flipped. Yeah, it said 874, 874.
I'll keep giving the third.
And the invoice says 874, so I think it's 874.
Yeah, $139,874.26. Yeah, and it was in the body of it, right. Okay.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
I said I'd kick in the other 34 bucks. Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And then just a couple announcements. K5 will return to the village the week of April 23rd to start grinding the streets remaining from our 2022 roadway paving project. They will begin in the Dells west of 86th Avenue, then move to the dead end of 83rd south of 123rd and North Woodland Trail. Weather permitting, the paving would begin the first week of May. And then for the fun stuff, recreation, Kids' Zone Summer Camp registration is now open for Pales Park residents. So hurry up and sign up because non-residence registration opens Monday, April 17th. This summer, we are offering four two-week sessions. Five-day and three-day registration options are available. So make sure you call and sign up quickly. Pales Park's 26th Annual RID Litter Day is Saturday, April 22nd. Volunteers will meet at 9:00 a.m. in front of the recreation center, and all supplies will be provided. They'll give you a glow-in-the-dark orange vest or a yellow vest, and they'll give you garbage bags and gloves, and then you get to pick your streets, and then you get to leave the trash bags on the side of the road, and Public Works will come by and pick them up. So please do not forget, come out to the recreation center, April 22nd, 9:00 a.m., and help make our village beautiful. And the Summer Recreation Guide will be live this week, so keep an eye out for updates on the Recreation in Parks social media pages. New this summer includes drawing classes, youth track and field, an improv workshop, and a strings music camp put on in partnership with the Suburban Youth Symphony Orchestra. We'll also continue to offer our Pickleball 101 clinics, as well as social, non-competitive open-play nights to get more familiar with gameplay. So there's a lot of cool things. Please check out the guide online, or you can come in here or at the rec center and pick up an actual printed copy. And that concludes my report.
Mike and Rick, can we make sure that the paving information is either in the weekly updates or on the website or something? Thanks.
And one other thing, do we have a plan in place in the event that it is under construction during the playground during Autumn in the Park? Is there a way that, do we know that it's going to be, or if it is, can we make sure that it's fenced off safely?
Certainly. The whole plan is to try to have it finished by Autumn in the Park Festival. We'll see when the equipment comes in. We'll try to schedule accordingly. We just won't rip it apart prior to that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Before or after?
But not during.
Building in public property. Commissioner Wade?
Thanks, Mayor. If you, real quick, if you hire landscapers to work on your house this spring or summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the Village of Pales Park. The two-page contractor registration form is to be filled out, certificate of insurance submitted, as well as a registration fee paid. Thank you for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance with the contractor registration process, call 708-671-3733. The building department processed eight permits from March 22 to April 5, resulting in $4,495 in permit fees, and that brings our total to year to $168,735.86. So thank you for that. And I have two other agenda matters, real quick. First, ZBA 2022-01, real quick, an ordinance extending the time period for compliance with Section 1264, spot 09A, of the Pales Park Village Code by six months with respect to a certain front yard setback variation approved pursuant to ordinance number 2022-13, adopted April 25 of 2022, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Certain Front Yard Setback Variation," commonly known as 9109 West 125th Street. Just a little background on this, on April 25, 2022, the village council approved ordinance 2023-13, granting a front yard setback variance of 42.48 feet from the required 92.73-foot setback, resulting in 50.25-foot setback to allow for the construction of a new family residence at the property commonly known as 9109 West 125th Street. The council vote was 4-0 on that. The applicant has not yet submitted a building permit. The applicant has stated that there have been several construction constraints, including supply issues related to concrete and lumber. Per Section 1264, spot 09, see, the applicant has requested a six-month extension for the approved variance to allow for more time to apply for and obtain the necessary building permit. Any questions on this? If not, I move to approve ordinance 2023-10, an ordinance extending the time period for compliance with Section 1264, spot 09, of the Pales Park Village Code by six months with respect to a certain front yard setback variation approved pursuant to ordinance 2022-13, adopted April 25 of 2022, entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Certain Front Yard Setback Variation" for 9109 West 125th Street.
Second?
Hearing a motion in a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And one more. This has kind of been something we've been working on for a while. Approval of Resolution 2023-R-01, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Camero's LTD relative to an update of the village's development regulations. Just some background on this. This process started back in July 11 of 2022. The village council approved the release of a request for qualifications pertaining to the Pales Park Development Code Update Project. Three firms responded to the RFQ, Camero's, Ansel Glenc, and Housio Levine. A review team consisting of the mayor, building commissioner, plan commission chair, zoning board of appeals chair, village manager, and community development director evaluated the submittals based on their experience, qualifications, references, and proposed approach to the project. All three of the initial submittals significantly exceeded the $75,000 budget by the village for this project. As a result, the village followed up with the three firms to clarify the scope of the work. All three firms submitted revisions, which were further reviewed. A revision from Ansel Glenc did not include a complete finalized ordinance and therefore did not meet the requirements of the RFQ. The revised submission from Housio Levine was for a not-to-exceed amount of $75,480, with an additional $1,500 option for attendance at certain meetings. with an additional $1,500 option for attendance at certain meetings. The Camero's resubmital was for a not-to-exceed amount of $75,400. The review team reviewed the revised submittals and conducted follow-up interviews with Housio and Camero's. At the conclusion of the process, the team decided to select Camero's as the recommended firm to proceed with the update of the village, of the village's development regulations. Finally, Camero's is a planning firm that provides a full range of services, including in the areas of planning, zoning, urban design, economic development, and landscape architecture. The firm is based in Chicago and has extensive experience with zoning code update projects with municipalities, both in the Chicago area and nationally. Local examples of the development code and zoning projects include Oak Park, LaGrange Park, Niles, Park Ridge, and Gurnee. Arista Strungus, FAICP, and PP is the partner with Camero's and will serve as the project manager for the Payless Park Development Code. I actually had a chance to meet her. I kind of went off script a little bit, went to the office and got a chance to meet her, and she's, she's top-notch. She's energetic, and she's really excited to get going on this project. So do we have any other questions?
I just wanted to thank especially Ed Marson and John Marsh for their help throughout the process, and Mark Herman for his great job and, and bring three qualified firms we interviewed to. They were both excellent. It was a really hard decision, but it was an excellent process.
Yeah, I think the right choice was made.
Yeah, I'm very confident that Camero's would do a great job.
Mm-hmm. If that's it, I move to approve Resolution 2023-R-01, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Camero's relative to an update of the village's development regulations.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. That's all for you.
That is it, yep.
Excellent.
That concludes my report, sorry.
Public health and safety. Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start off with the police activity report from the 27th of March through the 9th of April, year of our Lord 2023. We had 1,890 calls per service, an additional 25 citizen assist calls, and 22 case reports. Unfortunately, four accident reports arrested a single adult, fortunately no juveniles, did not impound any vehicles, made 78 traffic stops, 37 moving violations, and additional seven adjudication tickets, as well as 43 speeding tickets. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to over the last couple of weeks. And then just a couple of quick thoughts. The first is we have had another senior scam reported where a scammer posing as a comm-ed employee called our victim, using a number that appeared to be a comm-ed phone number. That's a spoof, so just because it says it on your phone doesn't mean it's coming from there. The individual threatened to turn off the customer's service, and here's the kicker, asked them to make a payment with a prepaid cash card. Whoa. At least it wasn't a gift card, you know? Pennies somewhere? So again, a tip-off there. First of all, commeds not calling you, they're sending you a letter. Second of all, if they're looking for payment, they're looking for like a real payment, like a check, or perhaps a credit card. I don't think commed actually accepts cash anymore, but certainly a prepaid gift card would not be on the list. So again, we'd like to warn you guys to be on the alert. These fake representatives often threaten some dire result if you don't immediately pay. So, and commed never asks a customer to purchase a prepaid card to make a payment on a bill. The more it changes, the more it stays the same. Make you aware of the fact that April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month, so please be careful out there. If you found yourself not watching the road, you're putting yourself in danger. We'll be doing our own special enforcement through the Payless Park Police Department, monitoring to try and reduce the incidence of distracted driving. We'll be watching particular intersections in order to, let's just say, re-educate drivers that are distracted who particularly violate red light traffic signals. So be careful out there, and if you're driving the car, you're not talking to somebody on the phone, or changing the radio, or whatever other voodoo, putting on your makeup, eating lunch. So again, please be careful out there. There's still people causing accidents, doing silly things. And then finally, before we get to Chief Miller, we're still giving away bike helmets at the Payless Park Police Department. We give out helmets to local children as part of the National Children in Safety Program. These helmets can be picked up at the Payless Park Police Department during normal business hours, right here at the Capter Center on the other side. Any more information, you can always give me an email, dpolk, D-P-O-L-K, at paylesspark.org, or you can contact the station at 708-671-3770. Chief Miller, anything else you'd care to add? Thank you for your service and the rest of the team. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. A council finances report. Commissioner Reed is absent this evening, so I'm going to read this item on his agenda. The Village of Payless Park operates under the Budget Act as outlined within the Illinois compiled statutes. As is required, the village must adopt an annual budget prior to the start of the fiscal year for which the budget applies. The village's budget represents the financial roadmap used to guide programs, events, services, and projects within the budget year. The village's proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2024, starting on May 1st, 2023, and ending on April 30th, 2024, is on file in the lobby of the Capter Administrative Center and on the village's website under the Finance Department section. A public hearing will be held at our next council meeting on April 24th, 2023. Final action on an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget is scheduled at the April 24th council meeting. Village staff have been working diligently over the last several months on the fiscal year 2024 budget. Some of the highlights include in the proposed budget include balanced budget, expected again in the general fund, which is the village's main or core operating fund, no decline to current village services, increased recreation department programs and offerings, and nearly 1.90 million in street paving and maintenance projects. We are going to purchase two new police squad cars, new playground structures at the village green that you heard about this evening, completion of a new enterprise resource planning system. A couple of the many benefits of this new system is that residents can begin to make payments to the village online, as well as apply for or check the application status for many types of building permits online. The village's finances are strong. With this comes opportunities to invest in our community. The village's proposed fiscal 2024 budget will be, will definitely invest in Payless Park. The items previously mentioned are just a few examples of investments in our community for this next fiscal year, starting May 1st. So that to happen at the next meeting. And that concludes Commissioner Reed's report. Mayor's report, I don't have anything this evening. I just wanted to mention that the village manager, Commissioner Milovich Walters, and myself will be heading down to Springfield, I believe, next Wednesday? Tuesday? And Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to spend two full days almost in Springfield this year. We usually spend one night and one full day, but we're going down for a subject matter hearing on a local government distributive fund. For those who are unaware of what that is, in 1970 Constitutional Convention, the municipalities agreed to give up their right to levy a separate income tax in exchange for which they would receive a share of the income tax collected by the state of Illinois. At one time, that percentage was 10%, so we would receive 10% of all income tax collected would be distributed to municipalities on a per capita basis. That percentage is now about 6.26%, and we've been working very hard, the last couple of years especially, we're making a real press this year to get the legislature to commit to raising it back to the 10%, even if it's not all at once, if it's over a several-year period. So we will be working on that in Springfield. That'll be our main topic, attending the subject matter hearing, and then meeting with our legislatures, legislators on Wednesday to discuss primarily the progress of the LGDF. So that concludes my report. Clerk Carrigoni?
I have no report.
Thank you. Manager Bannan?
I have one item. Hit the button. I've got one item for the council's consideration, and that's replacement of carpeting at the Capter Administrative and Police Center. On December 25th of 2022, Christmas Day, it was a great day, fire sprinkler pipe burst at a fitting in the Capter Center lobby. Resulting water damage affected this room, the administrative offices in the police department, as well as the general administrative areas of the village hall. Our insurance pool, the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, IRMA, has approved various aspects of the damage mitigation and cleanup companies used to date. IRMA adjusters have approved the replacement of all contiguous carpeting in the Capter Administrative and Police Center building. Existing carpeting is original to the building in 2001. So because they don't have thresholds around here, it's all continuous through the offices, so it will all be replaced through this agreement. IRMA has agreed to pay the chosen approved vendor directly, or the village is being asked to sign the proposals and make certain the work is performed to our satisfaction. Existing carpeting is proposed to be replaced with 24-inch by 24-inch carpet squares. In addition to the purchase of the carpeting, the scope of work will include moving furniture, skim coating the floor, and installing the carpeting squares. The village staff had identified vendor Key Carpet Corporation of Oakland, and IRMA has approved this vendor and its proposed, and its proposal in the amount of $39,990. So we're, staff is recommending that the village council approve this proposal, that we can move ahead, and IRMA will pay the vendor directly.
Rick, is it Key Carpet or Kay Carpet?
I, I think it's Key.
It's Key.
Okay, because in the agenda it says something else. So I'd like to approve foregoing the formal bid process and award the proposal to Key Carpet Corporation to replace the carpeting in the Capter Administrative and Police Center in the amount of $39,990 with IRMA paying the vendor directly. And I'd seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
That's all I have.
I've got a few announcements. The zoning board of appeals meeting is canceled for Wednesday, April 12th, as there are no agenda items. The police pension board will hold a regular meeting on Monday, April 17th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Capter Administrative Center. The historic preservation committee will not meet on Tuesday, April 18th, as there are no agenda items. The recreation advisory committee will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, April 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at the rec center. The library board will hold their regular meeting on Wednesday, April 19th, at 5:00 p.m. in the library. The Payless Fine Arts Committee will hold their regular meeting on Thursday, April 20th, at 4:15 p.m. at the Capter Administrative Center, and the planned commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 20th, is canceled as there are no agenda items. Village of Payless Park awarded its 30th consecutive Tree City USA. The Tree City USA program has been greening up cities and towns across America since 1976. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. More than 3,400 communities have made the commitment to become a Tree City USA. The Village of Payless Park was just awarded our 30th Tree City USA Award for 2022. In 1992, village staff and community volunteers began the process of meeting all the categories necessary to achieve Tree City USA status, which is awarded through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Village staff and volunteers continue annually to meet the required Tree City USA requirements as follows: a tree board or department, a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day observation and proclamation. Since 1992, we have passed out over 10,000 tree seedlings at our Arbor Day celebrations in addition to planting over 1,200 trees on public property throughout our community. And I'm happy to say I have a few in my yard. That concludes my announcement. Citizens and visitors comment period. Anyone from the audience like to address the council? Mary Ann?
It's called speeding. I wonder if we could ask the state of Illinois to come in and give some traffic study for all the accidents between 199th Street and to say 143rd, and Grange Road, 143rd, up to moves at that end. When you go on either of those streets, I believe they're state-operated, these three have the plows put on that way, and there's no, very few people abide by speed limit. It's like Zoomville. Doesn't matter what street it is. 50 miles an hour is not uncommon on either of those streets. And for those, even if you go, you know, speed limit might be 40, and you try to go 43 miles an hour, they're still on your backside. Kill you. There really should be more officers out there. Perhaps the state could supply them to work with our police department. And the state has four officers from one squad car, by the way, to be sitting out there. Boyen or the state, there are going to be two, because one, officer can be on the side with his radar system, and another attached that pool, and he goes down another 200 feet at 50 miles an hour and taking that person or people. It's catastrophic. You might as well have Lamborghini's running up the middle streets. So I thought, well, come over here, it comes tonight, and since you're going Springfield, you might make a proposal to the state police, as well as coordinate that with the chief. Anyway, it's just a matter of time, that more and more accidents are taking place because of carelessness, as people approach the stoplights. They're supposed to slow down according to the rules of the road, unless that was taken off out of the books. I haven't read that book for a while, but it had to be there. So when we get our train in Sandberg or drive, that was part of the consideration, slow down as you approach the stoplights. What the normal regular drivers do is zoom, pass there at 50, 60 miles an hour, and then they have these perpetual collisions, even on 931st. So that's a suggestion I have for you and your staff and group down there to contact the state and see what they have available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Anyone else like to address the council this evening? Hearing no such request, I would seek a motion to adjourn at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, and good evening.
Be safe out there.